This meeting of the Willetts City Council to order. We'll start with.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dolores May, we have a roll call. Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Mayor Fani? Yes. Before we start, I'd like to actually take a moment to mark the passing of William England IV, a true son of Willetts. He was a young man from a family with deep roots and a long history of service to our community. William himself was a volunteer with Roots of Motive Power for the past few years. His parents, Willie and Alexis, are longtime volunteers with Willetts Frontier Days. Willie is a volunteer firefighter with Little Lake Fire Department, and Lexi currently serves as president of Roots. William's great uncle Benny worked for decades for the city at our Willetts Water Treatment Plant. To say that William is deeply mourned and missed is an understatement. I know there are many of us at the city and on the council who know and love the England family. It's my hope that that love and support will offer some small comfort to Willie and Lexi and the entire England clan in their grief. We are holding you in our hearts.
If you don't know, then it's okay. No.
All right. Now, we would like to observe a moment of silence to honor the memory of former Mendocino Thank you. All right. At this point in the evening, we invite Public Communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, commission, boards, and agencies is not prohibited. The city council can take no action on non-agendized matters. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to the council regarding an item not on the agenda? Dolores, do we receive any emails about items not on the agenda? Okay. All right. We'll move on to item four, the enactment -- oh, I'm sorry, to public matters, item three. Our first is a presentation of a proclamation to Willetts Frontier Days designating Western Wear. I don't think there's anyone here yet from Willetts Frontier Days. Am I correct? No. Maybe we'll bump that to the end in hopes that somebody will show up and we can present. So we'll move on to B, presentation of a proclamation to the Hathaway family honoring the memory of retired Mendocino County Justice Court Judge Galen Hathaway. Read the proclamation. Whereas today, June 14th, 2023, the city of Willetts wants to recognize Galen Hathaway, retired honorable judge with the Mendocino County Justice Court, who passed away on May 7th of this year. And whereas Galen was born April 2nd, 1932, in McLeod, California, whereas a teenager, he worked as a groundskeeper for an owner of a ranch located beside the McLeod River. And whereas from McLeod, Galen embarked on his law career by attending the University of California Berkeley and receiving his undergraduate degree from University of Portland, then went on to graduate from Hastings Law School, passing the state bar exam and gaining admittance to the State Bar of California in 1957. And whereas Galen was elected to the Willetts City Council on April 11th, 1972, and shortly thereafter, Governor Reagan appointed Galen to sit on the Mendocino County Justice Court, unfortunately reducing his tenure on the city council until November 30th of 1972. And whereas Galen went on to take an early retirement in 1983 from the county of Mendocino, but continued on assignment for many years through the California Assigned Judges Program. Now therefore, I, Brett Akkani, mayor of the city of Willetts, along with Vice Mayor Gerardo Gonzalez and council members Larry Stransky, Suprema Rodriguez, and Mad Strong, do hereby recognize and remember Galen Hathaway, a man who has touched many lives with his compassion, love of conversation, great sense of adventure. We extend our heartfelt sympathy to his family. And I believe -- Jennifer? Jennifer is here. I'll take the place of the proclamation.
It's my great honor to present this. He will be deeply missed. We really enjoyed Galen. He's a wonderful character in the community.
Thank you so much.
Can you give the email to him?
Jennifer, I just want to say that when I had the pleasure of having him as, I'll call him my roving judge, he could be entertaining at times on the bench.
I'll say.
So I just want to point that out. There's all the serious stuff, but sometimes when you appeared in front of him, some of his --
Humor.
Humor was rather interesting at times. It did broke up the serious nature of the legal proceedings, so.
He always gave me grief when I ran into him on the street, but it was with kindness and always laughed. So.
We're now going to hear an update from our third district supervisor, Mr. John Heschek.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Akkani, council, and city manager and council. So John Heschek, third district supervisor. I have a few things I just wanted to talk to you about this evening. One is the budget for the county got passed. Well, we sent it on. It will be passed on the 20th, 21st. But really, we have a balanced budget at this point, but like I said in my update in the newspaper, that it's with $7 million of one-time-only funds, so it's not a great position to be in. It's not sustainable, so we need to keep working on that budget for next year. But with that, remember, we talked about measure P, and that money, all the money is dedicated to the fire departments and county prevention efforts for fire prevention. So that money is dedicated to that. It won't be touched and will be given to where it's supposed to go according to the people.
Will you share where this -- where did the $7 million come from? One-time money?
The $7 million came from different places. Part of it was PG&E funding money that we had for drought matching funds. We got like 1.2 million from that. Other was ARPA money, like one or two million from there. Some was carry-forward money. So we just kept sweeping a lot of different areas. Okay. And then I've been working on a renewable energy network as part of the Mendocino Council of Governments, and we got news that the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, is moving it forward. It's a collaboration between rural counties. So Humboldt and some other, Mendocino and some other rural counties will be working on it. And what it will do is provide rebates for energy-efficient appliances and home renovations. So there's a lot of money out there for those kind of projects that will save energy for people and also workforce development, where we're going to have to train people, contractors, how to do some of these, like heat pumps for water systems and such. So it's very exciting because there is money out there that we will be able to tap into as part of this rural RIN, is what we're calling it, the Renewable Energy Network. That's something that will be happening in the next probably six months. And then economic development. I know I've talked to the mayor and city manager about input into county-wide economic development. And so the board approved the idea that we have a standing committee to deal with that. And the idea is to work with the cities and other entities and industries and such to make sure that we're doing all we can for economic development in the county. So the first standing committee will be on June 26th at 1:30 in the afternoon. I'm on that standing committee along with Supervisor McGordy. So we look forward to that. And certainly, participation by the county or the city will be instrumental. We're hoping that all the cities are present, one way or another. And then lastly, the museum is having their open house tomorrow evening. I think it starts at 5:30, from 5:30 to 7:00. And the funding for the museum this year is secure, and so we're very happy about that. And really, the museum and the friends in the museum are having this open house, and it's really to make a better connection with the community and show support. So I think it will be entertaining and interesting. So anyway, I hope to see people out there tomorrow evening at the museum.
John, is there any update on the Bittenbender Trust Fund for the museum, whether the county agreed to move that over to community foundation?
Right, we did.
Excellent.
So it has been deposited in the community foundation.
Very good news.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else on council have questions?
John, later on in our meeting, we're going to be discussing groundwater. And I'm just curious, I know at one point you were talking about, the county was talking about looking at groundwater use in the valley. Do you know we're that bad at the county?
Well, the only thing, the thing I've been working on is trying to limit people who are selling groundwater and hauling it somewhere else. And so it's still at county council's office to check out issues that might come up from it. We do have a draft ordinance, but it needs to come back from county council and go to the planning commission before it's implemented. But the idea was to kind of make sure if someone's selling groundwater from their property and it's being hauled off somewhere else, then that it doesn't affect any of the neighbors.
And is that the only thing that's, on the county level with groundwater in our valley area, is that the only thing that's out there?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think one of the things that we've discussed at council level is a wish for there to be some sort of monitoring at the county level for the residents of the unincorporated area who are drawing groundwater. It's hard for us to know exactly the state of our aquifer if we're only looking at the city's portion and not at all the other users. And if the county had some kind of program in place to monitor that, it would help know the whole picture of the Little Lake Valley. So we could, I think, use some coordination with this between the city and the county.
I know. I would love to see a partnership because I think it's kind of like, Willetts trying to handle the problems of the world. Well, we can only do X, but in this case, our partner is out here in the county, and I would really like to see a partner out there.
Right. And I think that's one thing I've really learned, is that all of these things are interconnected. And so we really do, I will, I'll talk to the people in charge of the water. You know, the county has very limited capacity with the water because we don't have any rights to water, but we certainly need to be protecting people who are out there.
But wasn't there, when we had talked before, we were talking about the permitting process, and the county had kind of lost track of how many wells there actually, how many wells there are within the county's sphere of influence. So is there any plan yet from the county to start to tackle, you know, who has a well on their property and how deep is it? And then maybe the next step, like they were talking about the testing?
Well, environmental health regulates the wells, and so I'll check with them to see what kind of information they have.
Any Madges questions?
Just, I want to add my voice to those who are expressing that. It's really hard to plan the use of an aquifer when we only have a little piece of it, and the rest of it is in the county's jurisdiction, and we don't have data or access to data. There's no records being kept, and it would be really helpful, even if you don't have regulatory authority, which would be even better, but to at least have data on what's going on out there. Obviously, it affects our city water supply, so I urge you to do whatever I can, have the county partner with us in evaluating the whole watershed, the whole aquifer and valley.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is an update on a proposed community art walk from Mr. Gary Martin.
Yes. Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and other members of city council. How are you? Thank you for giving us the time to explain what we're trying to do. The Art Walk Initiative, which is developed collaboratively by Willetts Center for the Arts and the Mendocino Art County Museum, and local businesses situated along East Commercial Street, represent a significant cultural landmark in the area. Launched with the aim of promoting and supporting regional art forms, Art Walk offers an exciting opportunity for artists, visitors, and businesses alike to engage with one another in a vibrant community-oriented setting. As a cultural event, Art Walk serves as a platform for the promotion and celebration of various genres of artistic creativity, ranging from traditional to contemporary forms, thereby contributing to the enrichment of the local arts landscape. So far, we have this pretty well together. What's happening is people that are involved in being in different areas, for example, in front of Serpina's Place, in front of Spare Time, in front of Chemie's Pies, these are all private properties that we're talking about. And as people call in and want to join, we're assigning them to different locations. So for example, there might be an artist painting faces over in front of Serpina's. She'll have a little thing in her parking lot, a craft fair in her parking lot. We might get a musician. If we get a musician, you know, then we'd like to see musicians, five musicians, up and down the street, as a matter of fact, at different locations. So we've got that pretty much together. This is, a lot of this we're shooting by the hip because this is our first one. We don't expect this to be gangbusters in June.
July.
July 1st because of the other things going on with Frontier Days. But I'm open for questions, and if anybody else is wondering more about this, what can I tell you?
July 1st. I can add too?
Yes, please.
You mind if I add? So the art center and the museum have kind of taken the lead on it, and each week that we meet to talk about it, there's a growing number of businesses and people that are interested.
Yes.
And I'm pretty excited about it. I'll start all the way at the intersection of Main Street and Commercial, and then finish up in towards the museum and the ball fields. Rather than have one person who's responsible for organizing the whole event, we all are working together to take a piece of the project. So for myself, I took the responsibility of one block. So my block will have a craft fair on one end, and then on the other end, we'll have the garden area set up, and we'll have children's, because my block is generally focused on children, so we'll have children's art and children's hands-on activities. There's going to be a family event where you can paint, where you can paint a painting with your family member. You've kind of seen it as the --
Right. There'll be something out of doing sketches of people and --
Each place will have something unique and different and put their own little spin on it. We suggested, for example, Spare Time Supply, they're going to reach out to businesses on the south and see if they want to use, if they'd like to come and pop up a tent in their space there to bring attention to what they've got going on. So even if you're not on Commercial Street, you can most definitely still be a part of it.
Right. Yeah, this is, like I said, it's the first one that we're going to do, and we're hoping for the best. Like I said, I believe the first one will be a little bit thin. We don't know because again, we've got the carnival going on at that time, so we should have, you know, people walking up and down the street, so that should happen. Are there any other questions at this time? Yes, Madge?
July 1st, what time?
5:30 today, it's 8:30.
And then are you planning to do this on a, like, monthly basis?
Yes, well, just July, August, and September.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So of the three dates, I believe that the July and the September are primarily focused on art, if I'm not correct, at the --
At the art center.
Yeah, at the art center, and I believe the museum's got something.
Right.
And then the big one for everybody who's on Commercial Street, we've all committed to the August 5th, I believe it is, that evening event. We kind of envision it being something similar to the downtown festival, but on Commercial Street, and we want to see all businesses participate, just as when Commercial Street opens up, you know, opens up their doors and invites other businesses to participate on Main Street. We hope that the same will happen on Commercial Street.
We would also like to ask the city if we can put it down as a sponsor of the event. We would like to have your name on posters in whatever handouts we have. But the city of Willetts as one of the sponsors of the event would be wonderful.
I'll talk about it with the city manager.
Okay. And then the other thing I want to do is ask you for $1,200 for the event.
[Laughter]
What I'd like to do is be able to offer musicians who would play from 5:30 to 8:30, I'd like to offer those musicians each $100, and we need $200 for posters, for banners. So.
We'll discuss that.
Good.
You cut that from your roofing cost.
That was news to me.
News to everybody. I was talking about that. Thank you very much. Any other questions I can answer here?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Brian, do you have a suggestion on, should we go forward with the proclamation for Willetts Frontier Days or wait until there's a --
I would say, let's proceed.
Okay.
You know, we have an audience, we'll present it to the general public, and city clerk can present it the next day or two to a representative if they don't appear tonight.
Okay. So this is a proclamation from the Willetts City Council designating Willetts Western Wear Days for 97th anniversary, June 16th through July 4th of this year. Whereas Willetts Frontier Days is the oldest continuous rodeo in the state of California, and this year's theme, Wranglers Boots and Spurs, marks the 97th anniversary of Willetts Frontier Days, which still continues to draw people from all over to come and not only celebrate Independence Day, but to celebrate our community. And whereas each year, this event is run solely by volunteers with many hours dedicated to putting together this traditional event. And whereas this year, 2023, did not go without its challenges due to storm damage to sections of the grounds, city staff and Willetts Frontier Days volunteers had to clean out huts and find storage to allow city staff to make temporary repairs in order for Frontier Days to move forward with this year's events. And whereas this annual community event instills great pride in all of us who call Willetts home, past and present, I now therefore, Brett Akkani, mayor, city of Willetts, along with Vice Mayor Jerry Gonzalez, council members Mad Strong, Larry Stransky, and Suprema Rodriguez, who is dressed in her western wear this evening, do hereby proclaim June 16th through July 4th, Western Wear Days. Thank you to Frontier Days. We're looking forward to all festivities. All right. We'll move on to item four, enactment of ordinances. We have none presented this evening, so now we're at the consent calendar. These items are considered routine. The minutes of the May 24th meeting and May 31st special meeting are up for approval or denial. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. A motion and a second. Does anybody from the public have comments about the minutes from either May 24th or May 31st? Nope. Okay. Back up here, we have a motion and a second. Dolores May, we have a roll call. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Fani? Yes, thank you. Monthly activity reports do not require action by the city council but are of public interest. There are none in our package this week. We will now recess as the Willetts City Council and convene as the Willetts Successor Agency. The Willetts City Council meets concurrently, I think actually we're meeting as the planning commission?
Yeah.
Okay, so they both say, item seven and eight say successor. So we'll correct that, and right now, we're going to meet as the planning commission to discuss and possibly take action on an application for a minor subdivision for Mr. Roberto Vasquez and Taylor Perry, our city planner, will present.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable mayor, planning commissioners. My name is Taylor Perry. I'm the city planner for the Community Development Department, and we are going to be presenting the proposed minor subdivision for the Roberto Vasquez property. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, but we are going to proceed anyway. Oh, what button is it for next? We're going to proceed in a moment. The down button is not working. I apologize. Oh, we're working with it. Okay. The project is located in North Willetts on the west side of North Main Street at 140, 142, and 144 North Main Street, just on Main Street, approximately 350 feet south of its intersection with Sherwood Road. The .73-acre parcel is currently developed with a commercial structure that abuts Main Street that currently operates as a Mexican restaurant, New Mexico Mexican restaurant. And about 140 feet away from North Main Street, further west on the parcel is a residential unit that features a single-family residence and an attached ADU. The parcel is bordered on the north side by a chain-link fence that separates the project parcel from Mill Creek and riparian vegetation, and the southern property boundary joins an extended parking lot and basketball court of St. Hedren High School. The nearest residence is approximately 218 feet west of the nearest development on the said parcel and has its access off of Bittenbender Lane. Oh, no. Here we are. Technical difficulty. The single parcel comprises two separate assessor parcel numbers, and those parcel numbers are 005, 150, 05, and 04, both of which are currently described on one grant deed and one legal parcel description. The applicant, Roberto Vasquez, is seeking to subdivide this parcel into two separate legal parcels, which would allow each parcel to be individually sold. Parcel 1, containing the existing commercial structure, has the delineation of C1 Community Commercial zoning designation and is delineated in pink on the map. And the other portion of the parcel, parcel 2, for the sake of simplicity, which is developed with the residence and the ADU, is zone R1, and additionally has a combining zone of BL, which is a special lot size combining zone, which also has a subdivision prohibition, which prohibits the subdivision of legally recorded parcels further. So that doesn't speak to this case, but in the future it will. All adjacent parcels to the east and the south are similarly zoned commercial and principally permit businesses, restaurants, et cetera. And all of the zones to the west of the parcel and north are similarly zoned residential. Because there's no further development as proposed with this project, there is no adherent land use incompatibilities with this application. Rather, the proposed subdivision actually eliminates any potential land use incompatibilities with this split zone situation, which municipalities prefer to avoid. Here are a couple photos of the site as of recent. These were taken in June. Ah, I skipped one, I apologize. This thing is finicky. The photo number one on the left is the commercial building, operating as New Mexico Restaurant, which is right adjacent to North Main Street. And if you can see, north of the commercial building -- And if you can see, north of the commercial building footprint is an access point, one of two, and this access point in particular serves only Parcel 1. So, as described, it's supposed to just serve the commercial structure. Photo number two shows the residence and single-family, or single-family residence and ADU. And although it looks similar to a duplex, it is not. It is a single-family residence and an attached residence, smaller in size, that adheres to all state regulations and definitions pertaining to the state ADU law. Photo number three was taken facing northwest, looking at Mill Creek, so we can see the riparian vegetation buffer. And we can also recognize that this area is almost nearly entirely paved and is predominantly flat. The photo also shows the proximity from the commercial structure to the residence. And photo number four shows the property line, and was taken facing westward in the secondary access, which serves access to St. Hedren High School, Parcel 1, and Parcel This was the tentative map proposed by the agent of the applicant, Sam Pope, with Pope Engineering. In green is the delineated access easement, 12 feet in width, that does occur on the southern abutting parcel for the St. Hedren High School. And in the blue, we have two additional utility easements, one for water and one for sewer that would serve Parcel 2. That line in the middle running northwest to southeast, partially covered by green, that's the proposed parcel, or the proposed boundary line as part of this subdivision, which effectively legitimizes those two separate parcel, or assessor parcel numbers into two separate legal parcels. .39 and .34 acres in size respectively. Because no further development is proposed, no further intensification of use is proposed, no construction, this was a fairly straightforward project, and staff only identified a few issues of concern pertaining to those required easements that we would like to see and shall be recorded, and the subdivision prohibition related to Parcel 2. So condition number one recommended is that a shared utility maintenance agreement be prepared to include all sections of shared sewer utility line that serve both the commercial structure and the residential structure. And this is kind of an interesting condition, unlike, I don't think I've seen it in previous staff reports. And it's because this parcel has somewhat of an interesting history. When the residence and ADU were constructed back in 2019, there was an agreement between the city and the applicant, Roberto Vasquez, to allow him to tie in the new residential sewer lateral into a portion of the commercial existing sewer lateral. So as it stands, the residential sewer lateral for the residence, it runs towards Main Street, cuts left, and connects to the existing commercial utility line at a sewer cleanout. And then from there, the shared utility line runs east into North Main Street at a manhole centered, approximately in the center of Main Street. This agreement was made because the commercial-sized utility line was fully sufficient to provide services to both the commercial and residential structures, and because it would eliminate or minimize impacts to North Main Street, and it would save money to both the city and the applicant. So it seemed to appease both parties. So that's why I've included this condition. Ideally, the shared utility maintenance agreement would be submitted for approval to the engineer, the city engineer, and it would allow or provide assurance that responsibility goes to both parties, to both parcel owners. So I hope that helps embody that condition, because it is rather unusual. Condition number two is that the utility easements, both water and sewer, 5 feet in width, and the one access easement, 12 feet in width, will be recorded either to the specifications of the tentative map or per the approval and agreement with the city engineer. So that one's pretty straightforward. And condition number three, it was a subdivision prohibition we spoke of a little bit earlier. And that's, that once Parcel 2 is recorded as its own separate legal parcel, that no further subdivision would be allowed on that parcel for as long as that parcel carries the BL combining zone. Or unless it's otherwise authorized under state law. And there are a couple state laws coming down the pipeline that could apply, but either-or, should suffice to ensure compliance with the zoning regulations as defined in Willets Code, Section 17, or 420. Next slide. This project has been determined to be categorically exempt from CEQA, or the California Environmental Quality Act, under provisions 15, 315, for Class 15 minor land divisions. Now, Class 3 consists of three provisions in order for it to qualify for such exemption. The division of the property must divide no more than four parcels, otherwise it'd be considered a major subdivision, and different qualifications and regulations apply. No other variances or exceptions requiring environmental review were required. And third, all required services and access to proposed parcels are up to local standards and are made available. So this project adheres to all of those applicable standards. It appeases all applicable regulations of the California Subdivision Map Act, and it meets all of the regulations pertaining to Willets subdivision regulations in our Willets municipal code. So therefore, it is consistent with this exemption. To conclude this presentation, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the request for minor subdivision, MOD 2201, based upon the findings of fact and subjected to the recommended conditions of approval. Thank you.
Anybody from council have questions for Taylor? Jerry?
As far as the easement, so the easement prompted out of the property would be on St. Hedren's parcel?
Yes. There is, yeah, as...
Was that already there, or was that something they obtained for this project?
The easement is not currently there, and it was discovered upon the surveyors' creation of the tentative map that...
That it existed?
Uh, yes. So it looks like that driveway is placed directly in the middle of both Parcel 1 and the St. Hedren High School parcel. So an easement would need to be recorded on the grant deed of the southern abutting parcel of St. Hedren High School in order to meet all requirements.
Oh, okay, so it exists, it just needs to be recorded?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question, I didn't point you.
That's interesting, yeah.
Anyone else have questions? Does anyone from the public have any questions about this project or comments? If you could come to the dais, state your name. Sorry, the camera has to pick you up.
Joan DeMozzica. And I'm familiar with this project. And I'm wondering how you bypassed the sewer lateral rules of sharing a single sewer lateral for two residents. That's just not done.
Well, I can't say for certain, and I could probably get more information.
You know what I mean? I mean, that's just not ever done.
I believe it's because it's a single-family residence and an ADU.
But you're sharing with commercial...
Commercial.
And that's just not ever done. Just wondering how you bypass that law.
He was. That's exactly why we're looking at this, right? I mean, yeah.
It is unusual. It does...
Dusty?
Taylor wasn't working here when that got worked out. It was...
Dusty?
...to have familiarity with...
Dusty, you need to be near a mic, I'm sorry, for the camera.
So is under the ADU rule, the state's ADU, will determine... Was it under the state's ADU rule, wanting to determine that a single parcel would have an ADU, just 1,200 square feet, and they can interconnect the sewer lines as well as a water meter to create more housing on parcels? So the upsides for that was, it had to be a 4-inch lateral, they considered it was already a 3-inch. So, yeah, it was added to the ADU.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public have comments or questions?
So.
Okay, I'll bring it back up to the dais. Any further discussion? Entertaining motion?
I'll approve all of the staff recommendations.
I'll second the motion to approve the application for the minor subdivision.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Dolores, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez, reading?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Conni?
Yes. Okay, we will adjourn as the Willets Planning Agency and reconvene as the Willets City Council and move on to our city manager reports and recommendations. The first item is the possible adoption of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Willets and the Pine Mountain Mutual Water Company regarding installation of an emergency intertie. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to change things up a little bit. According to the agenda here, I actually want to jump into the verbal reports portion. I'd like to introduce the newly appointed Director of Services and Facilities, Olivia Grob. She's in the audience. I'm taking this opportunity to introduce her now because there are several items on here that she's probably going to interact with the council and the public with, and I think it's a good opportunity to introduce her. There's one other item on here. There, we have Rod Wilburn. He is our city-appointed engineer. There is a household relationship between Ms. Grob and Mr. Wilburn that we have recognized during, recognized during the interview and the appointment process. We have taken the appropriate actions to address that, and as we move forward, we have a newly appointed city engineer through LACO. And basically, Olivia and I have a acknowledgement that when we're looking at LACO's involvement in future projects with the city, we're just going to make sure that we're not overly relying or there's any sense of impropriety that Ms. Grob is demonstrating or showing off or providing to LACO. I just want to present that. But otherwise, she's been here a year, a week and a half, and it's been amazing. Yeah. It seems like that over there, it probably works, but, you know, we are glad to bring her on as part of the senior management team. She's going to address a lot of concerns that I have as we move the organization forward through the recommendations and the expectations that the council has for staffing and operating various facilities. So appreciate that. Now, getting back to this memorandum of understanding between the Pine Mountain Water Company and the City of Willets. This is an item that has been presented to the Water Waste Water Committee on several occasions. It has gone through their review. We have met with the representatives, or representative of Pine Mountain on several occasions. Has been discussed before the council in various versions or intent. This is the final draft, and the item that is in the packet does have some redline edits, and that is a result of discussions that took place after the last Water Waste Water Committee meeting with the Pine Mountain representative. And in there, it's basically discussing the possibility of a managerial consolidation of Pine Mountain's facility or their water services by the city essentially operating that as a contract service provider. I don't want to scare anyone right now, that it is potentially years in the future. What this MOU allows Pine Mountain to accomplish is to pursue funding opportunities, to look at the technical feasibility of your intertie, and the impacts on the city's facility, and what opportunities the city can leverage funding to improve our facilities, to ensure that we can provide the supply that Pine Mountain residents need, as well as there's no deficiency to our current account holders.
I was just thinking, it's a complex issue, and I'm glad that, as a council member, we've had lots of opportunities to really get to understand it, and I support it. I'm curious to hear what the public has to say.
Anybody else from council have a comment they'd like to make or question?
Well, I was going to reserve, same thing, I want to see if there's anything from the public, or anybody here from Pine Mountain?
They could not. Apparently, their board is meeting tonight. They, I was told they were going to, they had, their originally scheduled meeting was yesterday, but it got postponed to today. So there was a conflict, they couldn't attend. They're in full support of the revised document. They're encouraging the council to proceed. They think it's a good arrangement for both parties and entities. It is a means for both entities to obtain the resources they need. Funding to explore the option, and then the city to also look at options to enhance our ability to provide water for both Pine Mountain and our current residents.
I would like to open this up to the public to hear if anyone has any comments, concerns, questions regarding a possible intertie between the Pine Mountain water system and the City of Willets water system.
Clarification, once again, we're not physically, at this point, this is not for the council to consider emergency intertie or provide any water. This is basically...
An MOU.
MOU to look at...
The pot.
The possibility to, for, Pine Mountain is going to do all the legwork with their staff and their consulting engineers to look at the technical options for funding to move the project forward. They're doing all the heavy lifting. That's the arrangement we have with Pine Mountain.
So this is a memorandum of understanding to explore the possibility of...
The suitability, the feasibility, and what funding options are out there for both parties.
Any comments, questions, and if you have them, please come to the podium, state your name for the camera.
And just one, one other item. If the council does proceed to approve this MOU, and we do have the opportunity to look at all the components of the engineering, and it works, it will definitely come before the council to go to the next step, and then the next step. This is not guaranteeing you, this is non-binding.
And both parties have the right to withdraw from it at any point?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
My name is Robin Leeler. I know nothing about this project, so it's just a curiosity question, is which way would the water go? Would Willets be supplying water to Pine Mountain? Does Pine Mountain have extra water to supply to Willets? What kind of a relationship are you looking for?
Good question. I'm glad to have the opportunity to answer it. Basically, Pine Mountain has approximately 140 dwelling units. They have an older supply system. Rod, help me out. Two wells, two existing ground wells, two or three?
Three wells.
Three wells. The state has identified that they have some operating, operational deficiencies. They don't have enough account base to fund for improvements. There are times when they have shortages with their supply system. The potential is the city to supply water to Pine Mountain residents, to their system. The logistics actually work well because the base of Pine Mountain is the main truck line from our water, surface water treatment facility. So the connection would be at the base there, at the base of Pine Mountain, and then send the water basically into their system.
Top down?
Yes. And that's what is looking at the technical feasibility of, it's a little bit unique, there's some steep gradients there we have to look at. It's also where the line would be, because the switchback, you don't want to put pipe in tight curve radius or radius inside anything like that, so kind of working out the logistics of that.
Right, is it, if I remember right, it was also the possibility that water could flow towards us in an emergency too, is that...
There's a possibility, but it is almost like the elephant and the ant type of situation. We have the greater capacity, we have the ability, we wouldn't be relying on them. They need, have the reassurance that we could provide and have their system charged when they need it during drought conditions.
Is it correct to assume that this interest is not for year-round use but for special situations like drought or emergency?
Currently... Currently, that's what is being proposed at this first level. Is basically to make sure at the driest conditions of the season, late summer, early fall, that they have enough for fire suppression and also for household usage.
Health and safety?
Yes.
If the city gets out of it, it's possible funding to improve infrastructure-
Yes.
-and supporting our closest neighbors.
Yes.
And the infrastructure would benefit both the Pine Mountain residents and the City of Willets residents?
And the rate payer.
Yes. Larry?
I wanted this brought forward. I'm on the Water and Waste Water Committee, and I wanted it brought forward to all five people, and so that they can really understand what's going on. There are several other people out there or other groups that want water. And you have to remember that when the City of Willets bought the water from the dam, it was owned by Horn, a Malap person named Horn, which owned the water that we bought. We bought the whole situation from this fellow Horn. And he gave out or sold different people that are on, close to the line, an opportunity to tie into the line that comes into Willets. And so there are numerous people out in the valley that have city water because they're close enough to the line that they tapped into it, and Horn sold it. The city so far has not sold water to anybody other than that these people that were, when we bought it, we had to keep it because that's the way it was. The next thing that I have that bothers me is that this water line comes down from the dam and would fill up their tank, and if this all goes through, before we get it because there's no way for the groundwater that we have developed to be supplied back to them because it's not engineered for that. Might be one of these days, but it's not now. The next thing is that when you start, in my estimation, when you start opening it up to this, you're going to open it up, okay? And I want everybody to understand that that's in the City of Willets. And so that's the reason that we're talking about it, is because the city needs to know that there are other outfits out there, other groups of people or tribes of people that want the water also. And so they're going to come by you in the same situation, and, but I have no idea how many that are out there. But I'm saying that there are people out there that want this same thing, or groups of people, okay? And so we have spent, the City of Willets has spent a lot of money on getting our water situation firm so that no matter what the drought was, we would have water to supply the people in the community water. And so nobody else has paid for any of this other than the taxpayers in the City of Willets. And the whole thing about going through the four or five years that we've gone through this water, groundwater thing that we have all come up with is something that we ought to consider. And so I understand that it's just an MOU, but, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Larry. So this was open to the public. Was there anybody else from the public who had a comment or a question about this item? Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure. I mean, we kind of jumped from them straight to you, so I wanted to give anybody else an opportunity who had anything to say.
You know, it is an MOU. It does allow us to go ask our questions. Larry and I had some other questions regarding this, and Larry brought what he just brought up there during our meeting. And there's a lot of questions unanswered, and if someone else is going to foot the question, it's not coming up for the final vote, but it does give us an opportunity to study the situation. Yes, Horn and PJNE provided water out there that under the current rules, LAPCO would have to prove it, and we would have to be looking at annexing people into the city. But because those were existing prior to the city owning it, they were allowed to do what they were doing back then. So as Larry put it, there are a lot of people grandfathered into our system, but they're already rate payers. And I guess where I'm going with this is that I support this so that it allows us to, someone else is going to study it, we get to ask our questions as part of their study, and then we can come back before making a final decision. And so in that respect, plus I think people in Pine Mountain, they'll end up paying as, I think, I was told as rate payers if they ultimately become part of our system. And if we end up running their system for them, then obviously it's not going to be free. You know, they'll pay their share. I guess, hence why I was hinting to John earlier about, we have a lot of water questions out there, and I think it's important to have the county at the table with some of this stuff. Some of it's procedural that we're doing through this and in the future, but I think it's important out there that a lot of other folks out there that may want to join us, but the rules are going to be a little different if they want to join us. So that's all I got to say. I'm prepared to support this because it's an MOU to allow folks to study the issue.
Madge?
Well, just, I think it's important to consider that, A, there's no obligation on our part that we agree to anything going forward in the future regardless of what the analysis comes up with, and that Pine Mountain is in charge of doing the heavy lifting to figure out what they're proposing. But I do understand Larry's point that it's sort of like putting a foot in the door that we're even considering it. On the other hand, if it really works for everybody's benefit and we have sufficient water supply that is assured by virtue of the studies, you know, that if it can improve our supply, so we know we have adequate supply in the future to go forward with it, I don't see, I don't see a major objection to that. I just think it is, it's a very cautious approach that we want to take to make sure that we do in fact have adequate supply for our community and our rate payers going forward. So I'm supporting it, but I'm going to be very, continue to exercise a lot of caution.
After having had some time to digest it, because I, like most people, I'm sure we have mixed feelings when you first hear about it. For some of you this evening, it may be the first time you're hearing about it. But I feel like I've had some time to digest it, and we are looking at an approval of a memorandum of understanding. We're just at the beginning stages, and I'm willing to explore that. So with that, I would propose approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Willets and the Pine Mountain Mutual Water Company regarding the installation of an emergency.
Eric?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hunt?
No. Right, thank you. Motion passes three to two. Next item is to accept the recommendation by the Art and Public Spaces Committee to receive a donation of art sculpture for placement at Highway 20 Park.
We're hitting all the high notes tonight. Talking about water supply, emergency services, and art installation. Once again, this is an item that has come before the council several times in various formats. What we're looking at here is the formal acceptance by the council of the donated art installation being proposed by a patron, Ms. Jane Camp. This project stems, has a legacy of almost a year and a half to two now. This is a, the way this is being presented to the council for your acceptance as a donation, it is following the provisions of the adopted policy for the council to accept art pieces, art sculpture in public forums, public facilities, city-owned properties. The art committee reviewed this request several weeks earlier. They found no concerns. They agreed with the location that has been identified along Highway 20. I think there in the packet is kind of a generalized location of the sculpture. And the design, like I said, has gone through several revisions, and internally, we're very happy with this, the final version of it. It has evolved from something very whimsical to something that's much more modernistic with the type of materials involved, the form of it, and some of the detail work on that. It's very different from the original concept. So we do appreciate the commitment that the artist has committed to listening to some of our concerns and moving things forward. So that is what I have for you today.
Any comments or questions from council?
Just one typo on that page there. It says that the smaller one is three inches, and I think it's, not three inches, three feet, I guess, three feet.
Anything else from council?
I think it's an exciting project.
I'm just looking, Gary, did you leave?
Yeah, I did, yeah. Would anybody from the community like to ask a question or make a comment about the public art proposed for Highway 20 Park? Okay, we'll bring it back up here, and-
I'll make a motion to approve the Art and Public Spaces Committee to receive the donation of the arts culture for placement on Highway 20 Park.
I'll second that and want to thank Jane Camp for her donation.
Yes, long time coming. Jane was very excited about this a few years ago. It's taken us a while to get our ducks in a row and for the artist to get the design finalized. So thank everyone for their patience and their commitment to bringing more art to Willets.
I'm glad she didn't give up on us.
Yes.
And she has indicated that after this piece of art, that she envisions donating additional art pieces for the Highway 20 strip, so.
Very exciting. It is exciting. All right, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please, Dolores?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hunt?
Yes. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to the presentation of the annual groundwater report and discussion of the continued use of groundwater under our current operational use policy and the potential of a water modeling effort.
We're just building a network of the water. Yes, all right. I have the pleasure and the obligation here to introduce this item. We have Brian Wallace working as our consultant, also Rod Wilburn, who has a legacy and history on this project, and then Scott. So it's going to be a kind of tag-team effort to answer any questions that the council and the public may have, but we do have a presentation teed off, ready for your consideration. And I believe you have copies up here at the dais as well. So Brian?
Honorable mayor, vice mayor, and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. This presentation is primarily about the groundwater operational use plan that provided allowable circumstances for groundwater use, groundwater use guidelines, groundwater level monitoring requirements, and water quality testing requirements. Quick about us. EBA Engineering has been in business for about 44 years. We're based out of Santa Rosa, and we have several professional geologists, certified hydrogeologists, and professional engineers. And we primarily work in Northern California and do an array of different types of groundwater, environmental, and civil engineering projects. The wells are located north of the City of Willets on two City of Willets-owned properties. There's a depiction of the location of those parcels. And in this view, the north is oriented to the left. And here, there are four wells that are highlighted. Starting from the left, there's a blue dot, and there's a circle with a 500-foot radius coming out of that blue dot, and that is the Elias Replacement Well. That's the current production well. It was drilled to a depth of 170 feet, and it has a capacity that was reported to be 600 to 800 gallons a minute, but I understand it usually operates around 350 gallons a minute. Going up to the, up into the left of that, which is to the north and east, is the Elias Test Well. That was drilled to a depth of 206 feet, and that's utilized as a monitoring well. And then going to the south, approximately 2,400 feet away from these, are the Long 20 Wells. The deeper one's called the Long 20 Test Well Deep. That's drilled to a depth of approximately 200 feet. And the one to the, to the west of that is the Shallow One, Long 20 Shallow, that's been drilled to a depth of approximately 17.5 feet. Looking at groundwater production, the groundwater operational use plan stipulated that groundwater production should not be greater than 8 million gallons per month. As shown here, the flow rates, maximum flow rate was 6.3 million gallons in May of 2022, so there were no exceedances of that 8 million gallon per month limit. And now we're going to look at some hydrographs. I apologize that the font is incorrect in covering that part of the legend. This is a hydrograph. This is the groundwater elevation of the, you know, of the well there. The brown line is the ground surface, and the gray line is the top of casing of that well. And this illustrates a decline of 8.7 feet between April 2022 and August 2022. The conditions would be considered artesian in the beginning of that chart there, they're above ground surface. And the oscillation is shown between the high point to the left and then down towards the middle were from two to three feet in magnitude, and these are expected to be associated with pumping of the Elias Replacement Well. That's the pumping well. After about August, the groundwater levels recovered to the approximate elevation that they were at the beginning of the study period. And then thereafter, there's oscillations that are assumed to be associated with pumping of approximately three to four feet. And then the data set stops abruptly in February, and that is expected to be due to a faulty Next is the Long 20 Test Well Deep. This is 2,400 feet away from the pumping well. There is no data from the beginning of this reporting period until July, approximately July 15th, and that was expected to be due to transducer reinstallation. There's a decline from the start of the data down to the low point of approximately 3.8 feet between July 2022 and August 2022. Those oscillations are approximately one to two feet in magnitude. Then there's recovery back up to an arbitrary value because we couldn't see what it was like at the beginning of the study period. Thereafter, there's oscillations from approximately three to four feet that are expected to be associated with pumping of the Elias Replacement Well, and that's the deep. And then here's the Shallow Aquifer. Similarly, this one came online at the same approximate time as the Long 20 Deep, so we don't have information going between April and July. There's a decline of 0.7 feet between July 2022 and August 2022. There is no observable oscillations related to pumping during that time period. There is no observable oscillations related to pumping during that time period. The groundwater elevations recovered pretty quickly somewhere in November, and then they balanced out approximately ground level by December. And I also wanted to just make a quick statement that all of these hydrographs here are not indicative of the entire basin or the entire study area because they're just four wells, which gives you basically three different lines, one line from the pumping well to each of these three points. And such that, in this case here, the shallow formation doesn't really show any response, but that could be due to a very big confining layer that we, you know, understand to be present. But in other locations and places that we haven't researched yet, there may be different So another requirement of the groundwater operational use plan was to provide water quality data in the annual report. Iron, manganese, and arsenic were tested quarterly in raw and treated water, and this is a representation of those data that were collected. It's okay if I move on?
Can you just summarize if there are any numbers in there that sort of bump, that there are significant changes over time? Or any of the?
I think the...
It's hard visually for me to go arsenic in the first...
Yeah, the manganese numbers are bigger than the secondary MCL. On, I'm looking at the second row, those ones are a little bigger.
Yeah.
Because from 2, 2.4 to 2.5.
Does that indicate anything specific?
Just that manganese concentrations are greater than the secondary MCL?
What does that mean in English?
Well, like the basin has, it's like traditionally had high iron and manganese numbers.
So it's no surprise.
Yeah, it's like associated with maybe messing with your laundry a little bit, coloration. Next. Okay. In conclusion, groundwater monitoring reporting was performed during the 2022 to 2023 monitoring period, and collaborative surveying, data analysis, field measurements, and pressure transducer calibration efforts were made. The Elias Test Well groundwater levels recharged to pre-pumping conditions during the study period. Indications of interconnectivity between the city's production well and both the Elias Test Well and the Long 20 Test Well Deep were observed during the study period. Indications of interconnectivity between the production well and the shallow Long 20 Well were not observed during the study period.
Again, so the translation is that there is an effect on the Elias Well observed in the Long 20 Test Well, there's interconnectivity.
But the deep one, that's in the confined aquifer.
So does that mean that when you say it's interconnectivity, does that mean that water from where the Long 20 Well is migrates towards and forth between that and the Elias Well?
Groundwater flows predominantly from the south to the north. And the velocity of that and the magnitude of that flow is not really, we're not really to tell what that is right now just based on these hydrographs, but we can see that the water level went down 2,400 feet away, similarly to what happened, maybe when you look at the charts, they look similar, to what happened right next to the pumping.
Okay. I think I understand.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand this information, and so I'm just going to ask a question. So there has been a concern that when we're using groundwater, that wells that are nearby, that for example are out in the valley, that when we draw on it, it impacts their well. I was under the impression, as I've been investing, researching and finding out more information, that we are getting our water from so deep in a different aquifer that it shouldn't, in theory, be impacting shallow well wells. But if I'm understanding what you're telling me today, that impression I had may not necessarily be true, that this data is showing that it could be impacting our wells, is that correct?
The data shows that it's not impacting the shallow well in that location that we have for the Long 20 Shallow.
Not in that location?
Yeah. Because it's, the basin's got big, thick clay layers, it's got soil on the top and then, you know, one or more, or zero clay layers, depending on where you're at, and then beneath that, there's a confined aquifer that's pressurized. So when you're pumping out of that, you know, you may be, if you put a hole in the ground and open it to the air, the water will rise up like in the Elias Test Well, the water level's up here, literally. And then, you know, it's like pretty interesting, but the ground's dry, and it's dry down, it can be dried down 15 feet, but it's under such pressure down there that it rises up. So if you've got a neighbor that's 2,000 feet away and they've got a, they're tapped into the same confined aquifer, and you drop that level down 4 feet, the impacts of that, we don't know what it's going to be like at their place because we don't really know what the formation is like between the two points, because that's new data point. But if you did put a pressure transducer in their well and then looked at it over time, then you could see if you have a correlation or not. So that's just difficult to really make any absolute statements without doing more research.
Okay.
Is there a next one?
Ready for the next slide?
Yes.
Thank you. So recommendations would be to install telemetric flow meters on the Elias Replacement Well to provide a direct correlation of fluctuations of water levels within the monitoring wells as a response to pumping from the Elias Replacement Well. So right now, we have monthly flow data for the production well, but if we could look at the thing turned on here, this is the pumping rate, and then we could correlate that spike in pumping, that chart, to the response in the aquifer, that would be able to show a lot more information because we don't exactly know when the pumps on or off. And we just have our data that looks like, you know, okay, this is generally when we think it is, but we're not really able to match it up very well. So I think that would be pretty useful information to have and be able to really get a finer, better grasp on the relationships between the wells. And then the second recommendation would be to utilize more wells for the annual report. And the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District administered several more wells that are shown on this map as these green dots. I visited most of these on a November 15th site visit and learned about them. And there are some issues with utilizing these wells. Some of them are utilized for water supply for the wetlands mitigation project, so there's pumping happening. And that pumping would potentially cause, if they're pumping out of it, then the groundwater level's going to be lower than it should be if they worked. So there's some uncertainty about that. And there's also uncertainty about where they're screened. So what aquifers are they, are they in the shallow, are they, are they in the deep, are they in both? We don't have much information on that, but we did measure on most of them to the best of our ability how deep they were. Sometimes we hit a pump. We got some information on them, but we did not, we didn't really paint the whole picture to be able to confidently utilize them in the annual report. So that's just another thing to consider, and that would give us a bigger area to look at with a lot more data points.
So is the information out there and you just don't have access to it, or is there just not a forum to collect the data?
They collect the data and they can provide, I believe they do it monthly, but I'm not certain. And there's data that's depth of water, but it's uncertain if they're, you know, they measure from, say, if the well's way up here, are they doing it to ground surface, are they doing it to here? So it's kind of like a lot of different pieces that need to get standardized so that the data's consistent and based off of a vertical datum that's consistent with all the other wells. So you're comparing apples to apples because that's, that was one of the exercises that we did on November 15th of last year was to figure out, okay, you know, where's, how are all these things working, and how do you get all this data to be on the same datum, and make sure that it's consistent, and then check the data going back in time, make sure that's consistent. So those are just some of the kind of things that would be good to be able to accurately illustrate what we're looking at and how the, how the groundwater levels are responding.
How does weather factor in as, I mean, would your study also take into account we only pump X, but maybe someone else is pumping more, and it was January and there was a deluge? I mean, would your study take all that into account?
This study would not.
I know this one didn't, but if you did up...
The groundwater model would take into account annual, sorry, monthly precipitation, and then all of the pumping wells would be estimated, and then there would be a total monthly amount of flow coming out of those wells. That's generally what, to me, is standard, but you could look at a daily model, but that's a lot more data. And I don't know if you'd necessarily get a, you get a much finer picture, but it's tricky to say. And then you have to think about how much data can we go back in time with because you want to run this thing from a long time ago to be able to characterize what was the aquifer like, you know, to the extent of the data that you have, to be able to bring it up to current date, calibrate it based on all the measurements that have been taken during every drilling that was up, that was reported to the state. And all, there's CASGEM data for, I think, five wells that goes back to the 50s. And that's going to be quarterly data, and then when you drill a well, you get a groundwater measurement, that's going to be just whenever it got drilled and maybe a week later or something. But if you built it on a daily time step, you probably don't have daily data going back for, I don't know how long. The monthly is usually the way to go.
So any study would take into account the limitations of said study because, so a conclusion may only just be a qualified conclusion.
Larry has a question.
Hi, Larry. The problem that, that I found with, with this, anything that I have searched out or whatever was, the county has no idea of where wells were drilled in the valley, how long they were, how deep they are, anything else. And so it makes it really hard, I would think, to say, you know, that this well is, is pumping more water than the other because we only have access to our property, and, and we know what that is and it's public knowledge. But there's wells all over this place now. I mean, there's agriculture projects out there that our county doesn't even know about because they're still in black market.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, that's true.
And the Department of Water Resources, state government, started to regulate wells, I believe in the late 50s, and they required a water well driller to submit a well completion report to the Department of Water Resources. So if anybody drilled a well with a driller that's got a license, that's a normal well driller, there's a report that got submitted to the state. The state put all of those in their file cabinets. And then recently, in the last probably eight years, they've taken them all and put them online, they scanned them all, they put them online, and they put it on a one-mile-by-one-mile block in a GIS program on the internet. So you can see the map, you can click on a one-mile-by-one-mile square township range and section, and it'll load every single well completion report for you that was drilled in that square. And then you've got records going back to the 50s, you don't have them before that, but then you have to look at these well driller logs and try to figure out where it is. And it's like, it's crazy, it's difficult.
Yeah.
But there's, but you can...
And no idea how deep they are.
But it has it all on there. So the well log has the depth, the depth of water and the flow rate and what the geology was like. And that's like the key to building flow models is to understand what the driller saw as he was drilling, because that tells you what the geologic formation geometry looks like and where the bottoms of the formations are, and that's what you use to develop in three dimensions what those different geologic formations are. So there's a lot of data there. The more recent ones are a lot clearer and easier to understand, but the ones, sometimes in the 50s and 60s, it's like, you know, they're supposed to put a map on it, but back then, sometimes they didn't. So some of them are really difficult to pinpoint, but some of them are really good. But it's like an Easter egg hunt. But you can get the information in there and figure it out to the best of your ability. Maybe you have to scrap, maybe you get a total of, maybe here we'll have like 200 or 300 that we can look at, and then we'll scrap 20 of them. Because we can't, I mean, I haven't done this exercise yet, but you can't always locate every single one. So at that point, you can look at Google Earth, you can see, okay, they've got a house here, there's got to be a well somewhere. And then the model's discretized or separated up into these little chunks. Those can be anywhere from 200 by 200 feet to 1,000 by 1,000 feet. So if you aren't exactly sure where the well is, but it's just going to be put in the center of this model square anyways, so it doesn't necessarily need to be exact until you get it down to a really fine cell size. So there's a, it's very tricky, but there's interesting things that you can do to try to make that work and figure out based on the data that the state has what's going on.
But those wells aren't necessarily monitored, so you have a, you have data points of where they are and what they were originally drilled at, but if you don't have data on where their levels are now or how they're changed, how does that help?
It only helps because you get a data point when they drilled it, so you can use that. That's a valuable data point to calibrate your model to figure out, okay, we're, we're off by 10 feet right here, we need to change some parameters to try to bring this up. You can also, you've got it in the model, you can base, you know, if it's a house, it's got to say it's a three-bedroom house, you know, you could use a wastewater flow rate estimation of, you know, maybe 350 gallons per day or something like that to build a water demand requirement, and then multiply that out through 30 days for the month, and now you have a flow rate estimate that's, you know, generally going to be somewhat accurate. So there's methods of estimating what the flows are going to be based on just what the land use is.
Got it.
But you're not necessarily going to have a flow meter on it.
Right. Complex guessing.
Yeah.
And in the scenario, you wouldn't know whether they might be pumping, selling out water. I can't... Yeah. For the ducks. It's a lot guessing work, but yeah. The more data you have, the closer you can kind of approximate a guess, but you don't, you don't right now have enough of that.
Yeah. So I had a couple slides about the groundwater model. This one's got some pretty pictures. But to better characterize groundwater flow, service water, groundwater interactions, well interference, which is the effects of pumping on different wells in different areas, and estimates of total aquifer capacity, and then the effects of groundwater pumping on the basin as a whole, we could develop a flow model. And then the model would provide estimates of precipitation recharge, stream flow, interaction flows going in and out of the aquifer, evapotranspiration, pumping, and then if there's any flow between the adjacent Franciscan Formation as well, water coming in or out from the bedrock. And I had this slide as describing what you can do with the groundwater model, that you can better understand the impacts of pumping on service water such as creeks and wetlands, characterize impacts of pumping on neighboring wells. Again, total aquifer complex capacity and define sustainability objectives based on what that capacity is. And then a couple items that were not included in the scope that the groundwater model could be utilized for in the future included characterization of the fate and transport of water quality constituents over space and time. Forecasting groundwater supply and long-term impacts of pumping using climate change or climate future scenarios. There's a California Basin characterization model that looks at different timeframes, looking at 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, and what projections of climate are going to be like and how that could be affecting your groundwater here. Further, you could look at conjunctive surface water, groundwater planning models to provide cost savings and water supply scheduling between reservoir and groundwater supply allocations. So that could optimize reservoir levels or groundwater levels and minimize costs of that water delivery. Further, you could develop operational models that optimize... Further, you could develop operational models that optimize groundwater pumping rates if you had multiple wells in a well field to minimize the cost of groundwater production. And that also inherently provides, you pump, the more you pump, the more the water level goes down, the more it costs to pump. So if you have multiple wells and you can pump each of them a little bit, you keep the groundwater level high and you minimize your costs. And then finally, if there was the interest in drilling more wells, groundwater models can be used to identify the optimal location to drill, provide the sufficient flow that you need, minimize the capital cost of, you know, however many wells you need to drill, and then include parameters about tying into your water system and operation and maintenance costs as well. So, thank you. That's my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah. This is for, I think, city manager. I'm curious on the, on that last slide that you were talking about why build the groundwater model. You listed off a whole bunch of things that we could potentially recommend or do. That's a lot, and I'm just wondering what you're really hoping to accomplish. Aside from hearing all this information, what takeaway do you want? What direction? Because it says in here that you provide direction on potential water modeling efforts. So what kind, specifically, what are you asking of council?
So what staff is hoping to accomplish tonight, and hopefully you are successful, is to brief and advise the council on our last year's activity of utilizing groundwater. That was a request that the council made to return to the council with information regarding our annual allocation and usage and the problems or any issues we had, and we summed it up with the report. What we are looking to do now is ask us, ask for, we're asking for consideration to proceed with a more formalized groundwater modeling program, which Brian just alluded to, and you could see on your PowerPoint there what those items that would accomplish. That's what we're asking for. It would provide additional information, so, I don't know the timeframe, would you, let's just say six months to a year, you would return to us with the results of the modeling and demonstrate what you have found, the parameters, the stratigraphy, the dynamics of that aquifer?
Yes.
In essence, would that mean that you're asking for financial support from the council to allocate funds to do this? And how much? And what would we hope to accomplish?
Right now, we're looking at, right now, it's listed about 80, I mean, you know, fudge factors there potentially upwards of 90,000 to 100,000. But we can accomplish this with that range?
All of these items?
Not all of them, not all of them, correct?
The ones that have stars would be future work.
Yes.
So the first, the first ones are service water, groundwater interaction, understanding the recharge and discharge that comes from the streams and wetlands, especially in the northern part of the valley. Interference with the other wells, so that you would understand, okay, this is what the groundwater table looks like in these different locations where people are drawing it down and that would give us a lot of insight on what the radius of influence is from pumping and how that is superimposed on other radii and pumping from other different wells. And then it also would provide that estimate of this total storage capacity. There's two formations, there's already estimates that have been prepared before, but this would give us a three-dimensional actual volumetric model that we could utilize to really characterize better. How much water is in that thing and how much is going out of it into the wetlands and, you know, especially in the winter when it's all lake, big lake out there? How much is getting pumped out of it? How much is being utilized versus how much is going out? What's coming in? All of those things would be characterized on a monthly basis and all that data would be available for the entire history of the model.
Are you asking us to approve such a study tonight or are we giving you direction that we want you to explore it and then have a contract for the actual work?
Correct, correct.
A second?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just a direction that whether or not the council feels it's worth pursuing, developing a specific contract?
Yes, because the proposed study was not allocated in budget appropriations. So we would have to present a scope of work, budget estimation for the project and then present that to the council.
And then that could be done either as a going up for competitive bid or could be a continuation?
Continuation.
Continuation of this, and is either option still open?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So would part of that study include water quality also or just volumes and?
It would not include water quality.
Oh, okay.
That'd be like that fourth bullet, looking at containment and transport. It could be that once the model's developed, it would be straightforward to look at like a particle path and be able to identify certain, answer certain questions, but as far as like actually modeling out the divaction and dispersion of different, you know, constituents and how that, how the concentrations change based on them flowing through the geology, that kind of stuff wouldn't be included.
I mean, I guess the way I look at this is we want to be good stewards, we want to be good neighbors out of the county, but at the same time, that's why I kind of hit you up, John, I'm not feeling the love from the county as far as, it seems like we're doing, we're paying for the county's homework too. And I don't know how that comes back later on, it becomes a public record, so, you know, it's kind of like paying to paint your neighbor's house and they get the benefit of the paint, but it sounds like something that we need to do or want to do or want to know, so that we'll be stewards. But I guess I walk away feeling like, I'm not feeling the love from the county.
But we are the ones who built the groundwater treatment plant and we are the ones who are pumping water out of it. So it behooves us to actually have data to be able to interpret our actions and how it's affecting or not affecting the aquifer.
I just wish our partners or potential partners came in and cared enough like we are.
I hear that.
I think the data is really important, but I'm very much, my direction would be that there has to eventually be a component that includes water quality. I think that their constituents have expressed a desire to make sure that that is something that this council pursues, and so I would support that. And as I've been learning about water as a city council member, groundwater, there was a, there was a lot of hesitation and I heard some resistance from people in the community. And the reason that I, one of the reasons that I have moved towards supporting groundwater is, I mean, we've all seen the fires, we can recall when the fire was right there on the edge of our watershed and heaven forbid that we should not, you know, be in a situation where we can't use surface water, but it's compromised and we didn't take the time to invest and ensure that groundwater was something that we could utilize to make sure that our community had a healthy, alternative water source that we knew was safe and was fairly impacting our neighbors, so.
One item, I just overring up and follow up on Jerry's comments here and supervisor has checked in the audience here. If we're green-lighted with this project, the modeling exercise, that is something we could bring to the table with the county and say, hey, we have this document, we have this resource, how do you want to use that with your residents in your jurisdiction? Maybe we can work out a management plan or something like that. It's the first step in having that dialogue with the county.
To me, one of the most challenging aspects of this job of being on council is making important decisions with limited information and information that changes. And I think right now, what we have is incomplete data essentially. And what this is offering us is a chance to better understand, to collect more data, better data, and better understand what our situation is going forward. Is it costly? Yes. But otherwise, we're just making decisions with incomplete data. And we've moved forward with our groundwater treatment plant and we don't necessarily know what the impacts are of what we're doing on our watershed. And I think it's important that we know that.
I agree.
Can I make one quick statement, please?
Yes.
I just wanted to make it clear that the water quality component would definitely be an option, but it just, we need to build that model first and then once the model's built, then we can start using more tools and incorporating those tools into it, but we have to have the flow regime and the calibration done for the water quality modeling stuff to be able to work.
Thank you.
I was clear and your presentation was very clear about that, but thanks for clarifying. I think we just want to make sure that, and give you direction to our city manager who also knows that as we move down that road, that that's something that's important to us too.
But that's an end game thing, but we get what you're saying, you can't go to there without first developing that, so.
I'd like to open this up to the public to hear if anyone out there has comments, questions, concerns about this proposal.
Or questions regarding the groundwater usage?
Yes, yes, about the report that we received regarding our usage in this past year. Okay, well, bring it back up here. Would anybody like to make a motion to give Brian direction on how to move forward with the possible groundwater model and to accept the report of the groundwater use of this last year?
Well, I would be curious what, if Brian felt like he got direction from our comments and if he did, maybe summarize what you think our direction is.
Right, that might save us from having to make a.
I'll turn that back at him.
Well, you know, if you did make a motion, that would formalize your instructions to me. I think the critical members of the staff team that would be working on the project also heard your wishes, your desires to move forward with a modeling exercise. What we can do is, if the consensus of the council right now is to present something more refined with a budget scope and a request to modify the budget through Manning's authority, I can have that presented to you.
I'll make a motion to do the recommended action.
I'll second.
Did Brian just?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't like that.
When you make a motion.
His direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is the direction that we're giving for going forward with exploring this idea of a groundwater modeling contract. I do have a comment about the report on usage over the last year. Should I wait until we've taken this vote and then comment about that? Or should I comment?
Jim, what's our?
I think, I think we should hear Matt's comment now and postpone the vote until this is the final step in this discussion.
So as we all know, I was concerned about the potential interpretation of the use guidelines that we adopted a little over a year ago. I'm still concerned that they're a little vague and could be interpreted differently by different people. I've had an extensive conversation, several extensive conversations with Brian Bender and I feel reassured that the interpretation that we're using now, the staff is basing it on, is a conservative one. That is to say, we're not going to, for example, say that we get an 8 million gallon average per month, so we didn't use it at all last month, this month we can use 16 million. We're not doing that and we're not going to do that. As long as that's really, really an understanding that's clear to the council and to the staff that 8 million gallons is pretty much a cap, and that's what I'm hearing today, is that it's the cap. If there were some enormous emergency and we had to go over that, we would, we would know about it right away, it would come to the council, it's the first feasible opportunity to figure out what the crisis is and how to address it. I just want to make sure that that, that understanding is what we're all going with because I don't want to have us take a liberal interpretation and use a lot of water before we understand what the potential impacts are. We're kind of, you know, flying a little blind here and I would rather be very conservative and protect the future of that water supply and the safety of that until we have enough information to potentially expand that. But I'd like to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I can affirm that my belief was that of which you said then and now. And I'm in full agreeance that it's the eight, with the 8 million gallon cap per month and that if it wasn't for any reason going to be more than that, that we would, it would come before council for an exception. That's always been my understanding.
And I just want to add as well, Scott's excellent reporting, when you get your monthly reports, he documents the previous ones' activity and typically when I ask him, hey, Scott, I see you got, we got some flows going on in the groundwater plant, what's going on? And he'll explain maintenance, we have a problem with the surface water treatment facility flushing. The ability to have that resource for flushing over the last two years has been a godsend with the crews as they cycle through on the distribution side, so, yeah. So I guess my point here is that you do get copies of the pumping or activity levels. If there's any changes, I let you know, Scott passes it on to me. We're trying to be transparent, we're not trying to slide millions of gallons, you know, out the door with no one knowing, that's not our intent.
Any further comments, council? Okay. Do you feel that you have clear direction or would you like us to?
Yes, madam mayor, I do.
Okay, we had a motion.
Yeah, motion due.
I saw a hand up and I know you had already asked.
Someone had a comment.
Would you like to make a comment, Robyn?
I just want to thank you all. I used to come to city council meetings before I came here, this is just so blessed to hear the discussion, the questions, the answers. I love that you're all.
Thank you, we don't hear that very often.
You can come every time.
Please come again.
Lil' one's growing up.
All right, so I believe we had a motion.
You do.
And a second, so may we have a roll call, please, Dolores.
Councilor, yes, Rob Pevens.
Yes.
Jernski.
Yes.
Mayorkas.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Rod and Scott and all of the staff that have worked on this, I appreciate it.
I also want to thank Andrea, who's not here with us, her commitment to this project and seeing us through is also very appreciated. Since I jumped to D first, I do want to introduce another staff member and this is actually responding to an item that the council has made clear in early conversations with me as well as your adopted goals. Community development, I'm looking at Dusty in the background there, we have appointed a code compliance officer, Phil Davison. He is on, in capacity right now and that brings our ability to respond in a timely fashion to public inquiries regarding code compliance, also some additional building activity. It actually brings another body to that department that was necessary and I guess the message I want to convey to the public is, they're with us, we're getting Phil up to speed, he's sharing an office with Malani right now, we're just kind of double bonking everything. Growing pains, but we're going to get there. Phil, what I receive is a true gentleman, has character and those essential skills in that position, so I believe he's going to work very well with the public.
Would now be an appropriate time to ask a code question?
Dusty's right there.
All right. I did get an earphone, I promised that I was going to city council tonight and I would ask these questions. The railroad tracks, I know that there's an issue of jurisdiction, but on the outer edges of the tracks where the weeds are growing, is that city responsibility, private property, Who's in trouble? No, I'm just kidding.
Can we send a group of goats out?
There we go. You had it.
There's fire safety concerns about the weeds that are growing along the tracks.
Yeah, we have written a number of letters to residents throughout the city as a courtesy notice, even letting them know that they need to take down their vegetation because it poses a fire hazard to themselves as well as their neighbors and the overall city. A lot of these are fortunately people we have to write letters to every year, a lot of them, some of them are folks that are out of town or out of the area. The NCR, our Great Redwood Trail Agency, now maintains that right-of-way, the railroad corridor for the most part, and they're aware of a few locations where they do. corridor for the most part, and they're aware of a few locations where they do need to abate their vegetation. The specific location you're talking about, we'd have to look into it because obviously the city right-of-way abuts right up against the railroad right-of-way. The good news is we recently had the area surveyed for the benefit of the trail that we're looking to start constructing next year, so we have a good idea of where that line is.
So the trail is on the east side of the tracks, correct?
It changes locations at a couple spots.
Okay, so from, let's say from Commercial Street here to just past Railroad Avenue, that section right there is where I'm hearing the most complaints. And generally, generally, there's one complaint on the east side, but on the west side are where most of the complaints are. And I would even make it more specific where the railroad cars are because the railroad cars are already attracting attention for their ugliness. Now we have, you know, six-foot-tall weeds all along that section. For example, who is responsible for abating the weeds, just say by where the railroad cars are?
Yeah, from your description, it sounds like this is an area that's within the GRTA's right-of-way, and they're responsible for removing those weeds, and they've been provided a courtesy letter.
They've been given a courtesy. When would the public expect that, you know, you get a courtesy letter, and if you don't take care of it by this date, then at what point might something move along?
Yeah, I think most of those letters went out with a timeframe to alleviate the situation by around June 19th. So then you get a second notice that's a little less on the courtesy side.
Okay, and then-
And we have the ability to find property owners. I mean, that's not what we're trying to get. We're trying to get folks to get it done themselves.
And right now, at the point where you're writing the courtesy letters, are those coming from the city or those coming from the fire department?
They're coming from the city in consultation with the fire department, and we reference both city code as well as fire letters.
Is there ever a point where the fire department might step in and say, hey, they're just not complying fast enough, and they can move things along quicker? Or is it really a partnership all the way through? These are questions-
Historically, it's been a partnership, and typically, I'm not aware of gotten to a situation where the fire departments have to hit hard and heavy, and I won't speak for the fire chief, but yeah, I'm sure there could be scenarios where they have high concern and make use of the tools available to them to help alleviate the situation. Again, I'm sure it's all in consultation. We have a good relationship with them.
Because people are asking me, like, if the city's not, in their opinion, the city's not getting it done fast enough, would it help if I called the fire department and filed a complaint there? But if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like no. Report it to code enforcement, that's the way to get it done?
I mean, both parties are working simultaneously and are aware of the same situations, so yeah, I think you're fine to start with code enforcement. If you don't feel like, you know, if someone doesn't feel like they're getting the response that they feels appropriate, they're fine to contact the fire department as well.
Okay. I'm just throwing out some community questions.
Yeah, this isn't new. This essentially comes up every year, and unfortunately, it's an exercise that we have to go through. And like I said, a lot of times, it's the same addresses and the same property owners that we're happening with.
Yeah.
And eventually, it gets done. Some are faster getting there, and some are-
Do more phone calls concerning help or not?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, and I don't think it help matters much that we had, it would rain, stop raining, come again.
Sun, rain.
Some places in town that cut weeds, I've seen them out, but those are folks that are in town. These other folks probably didn't get it the first time.
Thank you, Dusty. Thank you, Dusty.
Thank you, Dusty. That's what I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We'll move on to department recommendations. These are action items. The first up is the resolution to award a contract to Argonaut Constructors in an amount not to exceed $656,542 for the construction of the West Mendocino Rehabilitation Project Phase One. We will not be hearing from Andrea Trincato, project manager. I'm guessing, Brian, you'll read us this?
I see Olivia jumping up there.
Olivia, I'm sorry. Of course, yes.
Olivia can jump on it. I can do it. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. I know some of you, but not all of you, so I hope to get to know each one of you individually. This item is to request council, as you stated, to award a contract to Argonaut Constructors for the West Mendocino Rehabilitation Project Phase One, which involves improvements to drainage on West Mendocino, and I think the plans were in your packet. The council authorized advertisement April 12. The bids were opened June 1st. Four were received with Argonaut Constructors coming in as the low bid at $656,542. That's approximately $32,000 over the engineer's estimate. The project is scheduled to start approximately July 5th and run for 45 calendar days, which would put completion just before the start of school. Our recommended action is to award a contract to Argonaut Constructors in the amount stated. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions?
I'm thinking, because of the proximity of the school, and I know you guys are going or they're going to finish before school, or at least we hope we do, but I think as we get closer to school starting, that we keep that line of communication up with the actual schools.
Sure.
So that they know with the district and the schools, because I think in the past, whether it's us or the, I've heard that sometimes we're good at communicating, sometimes we're only good at communicating with the district, and sometimes their internal communication is not in place as well as it should. So I think if we communicate with the actual schools still.
Sure, and we will make the priority to start the project near the school to ensure that it's not the end of school, the end of the project beginning of school.
Any other questions or comments from council?
No, I was just thinking improvement projects are always wonderful when they're completed, but if you're living in that neighborhood during a project, it can be a challenge until the project's completed. So I'm glad that it's not going to take too long.
Yes.
On that subject, does Argonaut have a record of being good at informing residents along the construction zone of what's going to happen to them?
Sure. I have experience with that contractor from another agency. They do work well, and we will work with them to make sure that that's part of their supplemental process and that they alert the residents as needed as they go along.
I think there's a lot of advantage to having people know what's going to happen, you know, a week ahead of time or whatever, because it's when they all of a sudden hear the jack hands.
Especially around the 4th, because sometimes folks leave for the holidays, so.
So anyway, if they are good at that, that's great.
I'd like to open this up to the public to hear if there are any comments, questions, concerns about the potential awarding of a contract to Argonaut Constructors. Okay, we'll bring it back up. Entertain a motion.
I would like to move the resolution, city council, to awarding the contract to Argonaut Constructors.
Okay.
The amount not to exceed $656,542.
And it just occurred to me, even though I don't live there, I do own a property there, so I'll go ahead and abstain from the vote. Is that appropriate, Jim?
I'm sorry.
I own property about two blocks from, I'm on West Mendocino.
Is it within 500 feet?
I'm not sure exactly. I am one city block from the stop sign there on the corner where the Brookside Elementary is.
Well-
How far is that?
I don't know how far that is. If it's within 500 feet, it's generally considered to be a material interest that might cause a conflict. However, there's an exception. The California Code of Regulation says that the financial effect of a governmental decision on a parcel of real property which the official has a financial interest is not material if the decision solely concerns repairs, replacement, or maintenance of existing streets, water, sewer, storm drain, or similar facilities. As long as it's not, there's an exception to that exception. And that is if it's an improvement as opposed to maintenance, and the improvement results in a disproportionate impact on your parcel, then you would have a conflict. So the question, the bottom line is, if this project is within 500 feet of your real property, you are not disqualified if this is simply maintenance of existing facilities as opposed to an improvement that results in a disproportionate impact on you versus other homeowners.
I don't believe I have a disproportionate-
No, and she's not going to financially gain from, solely from this action.
All right, full disclosure, so.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Strong?
Did we ever ask for any public comment?
We did.
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Conne?
Yes, thank you very much. We love improvement projects. All right, next up is discussion on possible action adopting a resolution to establish the city's 2023-24 Local Roads and Streets Program striping project. Or, as it says in the staff report, stripping project. Woo-hoo!
I generally point out taco, I'm like, oh no. I had taco.
It's my fault. I'll take it.
I told Brian it's going to be a really hot summer.
We all want to see a little flesh, right?
This item is asking the council to adopt a resolution establishing the project list for local streets and roads program to requirements for the funds. The funds are SB 1 Gas Tech Tax Funds. It's a revenue source that we get annually. It's actually installments monthly. The estimated total installment will be $119,874 in the fiscal year 2024. The proposed project list includes a traffic striping program, the variable sign message board purchase, and I believe that's sign number two of three. Ultimately, they'll be used in traffic control plans that we have for instance, the upcoming parade, detour, hometown celebrations, anytime we close streets or need to notify the public. So we will have two of those. And finally, any traffic safety equipment that we purchase in the next fiscal year. The recommended action is to approve the resolution adopting the project list and direct staff to submit the resolution to CTC by June 30. Do you have any questions?
For clarification, there was a, I had a discussion with the mayor this afternoon, caught a couple, requested several corrections to the resolution. There should have been copies presented to you with the highlighted red line text with the notification. So council, staff is recommending council to consider that version of the resolution.
And I saw that that was posted on the city's website, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Dolores.
Okay, any other questions or comments from staff or from council?
I just want to say, similar to Spreina, I live on Raymond, and Costa is there, but I talked to Jim earlier, I'm not going to gain anything from the striping, so I feel comfortable I can vote on this.
We'll just put it down thinner on your side.
Yeah.
I think it's important for us to disclose it, even, just so that the public knows why we're voting or not voting, yeah.
Does anyone from the public have any comments about this item? Nope? Okay, we'll bring it back up and entertain a motion.
I would like to some of staff recommendations.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, Dolores?
Councilor Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Conne?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to department monthly reports, which are not here tonight. They are presented at the second meeting of each month. And so we will then move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. Madge?
So the interesting one was last week, the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority met, and we adopted a very outline form budget, which, by the way, all of this is part of the transition of privatizing the actual services of hazardous material processing and collection to the, what is called CNS, but it's specifically the Ucaia Waste Solutions branch of CNS, which, by the way, is right adjacent to the solid waste management building there on Plant Avenue in Ucaia. So the contractor is now in charge of that. The first thing they did for the last two months was really clean out the plant itself because there were a lot of hazardous materials stored there. They were not properly handled. They needed to be packaged and got out. Anyway, so that was their first priority. So they have not really increased any of the other services. They're now open for collections in Ucaia at that plant. The next steps are that they're going to start remote collections. They had a problem with the equipment. One of the truck that belongs to MSWA was simply not repairable to a CARB compliant standard. So CNS has a truck that they use in Lake County. They're going to start figuring out a way to bring that over to Mendocino County. It's going to take a few months. Basically, that's the bottom line for us outlaying areas here in Mendocino County is they aren't ready to start remote collections yet, but they are, it's a high priority. They're going to be working on that. The other, it's sort of not solid yet, but the, it's not a rumor, but the CNS and solid waste of Willets are working cooperatively, and the hope is that solid waste of Willets will be able to provide onsite at our collection facility here, at our transfer station, that they can collect some of the hazardous waste so that we're not only relying on a couple of dates, you know, once every couple of months, to have the truck come up to Willets. So that would be a much more convenient arrangement for our citizens to have access to our transfer station than MSWA could collect it from solid waste of Willets in the appropriate vehicles, which, you know, only MSWA has. So anyway, that, there is progress. It does appear that this privatization with Ucaia staff being the administrators is so far in its infancy, but it seems to be working. And the board is only going to meet every couple of months to sort of keep a handle on that. The EDFC, Economic Development and Financing Corporation, did not meet this month, and the Sonoma Clean Power did meet, and as usual, it's very fascinating, all of the things happening at the state and the Public Utilities Commission level, in which Sonoma Clean Power is a really strong advocate for our county and for our rate payers and for energy efficiency and trying to reduce the fossil fuel usage for electricity. They are looking forward to potentially reducing the rates. They're already below PG&E's rate for just the unbundled electricity part of your bill, but towards the end of this year, they are hoping to go even better because they have been managing their budgets very well. I think that's it for me.
All my boards and committees are meeting in this, in the next two weeks. It's heavy at the meetings, so I'll report out next time.
Thank you. Larry?
Nothing, just that it's getting close to 4th of July, and we have a lot of people that infect our town and try to do the best you can to keep things clean and nice. Thank you. Thank you.
I had LEPCO on the 5th of June. We voted on, it was a public hearing, on our final budget. And then we met in closed session to give direction to the executive officer regarding legal services. So that's all I really had.
I attended MCAG last Monday, and we also approved our final budget for the year. And I wanted to thank Amber in the Community Development Department, who not only gave me the keys to the hybrids so that I could drive down to the meeting, but she even had the car washed for me and made sure it had, yeah, all ready to go. So I really appreciated that. Made my trip easy. Do we have any good and well fair?
I just announced that WELL is sponsoring the building community gatherings that we've already had, too, that are very well attended. And we're kind of reaching out to a lot of partners in the community to address and have volunteers come forward on things like warming center, community health, local food and farming, and emergency preparedness. I'm going to have Dusty come on Sunday, Sunday, June 18th is coming Sunday at 4:00 is our next community gathering. Dusty's going to talk about land use element, how people can get involved in that. We're going to have someone from Community Foundation on the emergency preparedness planning that they're doing. I think someone, yeah, definitely someone from Blue Zones talking about their activity in the community. So it's a way to try to connect different groups, both nonprofit and agencies, so that citizens can know what's going on and find ways to help out and make our community even better than it already is. So come and join us on Sunday at the Methodist Church here in the 4:00.
And I think that with the struggle that the retail and restaurants have been having this year, we are all excited and looking forward to the increase in tourism and the shop-at-home type atmosphere. So just encouraging everybody, shop local, pretend you're a tourist at home. Keep your businesses in business, because as more and more businesses nationwide are turning to online shopping, brick and mortar is struggling. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about your purchases this year.
I wanted to say congratulations to the class of 2023. Last Friday was graduation for Willets High School, San Hedren High School, and Willets Charter School. And the Sober Grad Committee pulled off another successful Sober Grad. And our councilwoman, Suprina Rodriguez, volunteered during the Sober Grad night.
And Jerry.
And Jerry.
We spent the evening together.
Excellent. So I wanted to just give a shout out to the grads and wish them well, and thank our council members for being such great community members.
I just want to say, Manny, Fire Department, their fundraiser, is it this week?
It's this weekend. September 17th. There's going to be court term and, you know. I got tickets.
Thanks.
Just one friendly reminder, building on the comments regarding the land use plan, we'll have a special meeting for the council a week from tonight at 6:00 PM. Going to be more of a workshop format to get finalized some concepts and elements for that plan to give back to the consultants as they're finalizing the draft. So please keep that in mind. And it's open to the public.
Thank you very much. We have no closed session tonight, so at 8:44, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.